Good evening, everyone. I would like to call this meeting to order. The Blue Springs Planning Commission meeting on Monday, October 27th, 2025. Please rise and join us with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the Lord, United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Paul Coltrane, please?
Yeah. Commissioner Ingersoll?
Here.
Commissioner Humphrey?
Present.
Commissioner Stockenberry?
Present.
Commissioner Smith?
Present.
Commissioner Sanderson?
Present.
Commissioner Cradoff? Commissioner Graham?
Present.
Commissioner Howe?
Here.
Chairperson Hennig?
Here. Thank you and welcome, everyone watching from home and here in the gallery with us. Tonight's meeting agenda consists of the minutes from the last meeting, which was on October 23rd. Correction, October 13th. Items 2, 6, and 8 is a rezoning, general development plan, and preliminary plat for Sullivan Ranch. Item number 3, 7, and 9 is rezoning, general development plan, and preliminary plat for Colburn Farms. Item number 4, 5, and 12 is the rezoning, planned development concept plan, and planned development final plan for Rampage Athletics. Number 10 is the final plat for Briarwood Oaks Estates. And 11 is a final plat for Hudson Estates of Blue Springs. At this time, I would entertain a motion for approval for the consent agenda for the minutes for the September 8th meeting.
Chair?
Yes.
Still moved?
Second.
Of a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously. I will now open the public hearing for agenda item numbers 2, 6, and 8. The rezoning, RZ07259646, general development plan, GDP07259647, and preliminary plat, PP07259648 for Sullivan Ranch. At this time, I'll ask for exhibits from our city attorney, Josh Newell.
The city would like to enter exhibits 1 through 8.
Thank you, Josh. All those that are here tonight that would like to speak in favor of or in opposition to or anything about this project, please rise and be sworn in together collectively as a group. So again, if you have anything to say about this project, be sworn in.
I do.
This time, I'll ask for staff's presentation. I see Ms. Frye.
So Chantel Frye, 903 West Main Street, Blue Springs, 64014, and I have been sworn in. Good evening, chairperson and members of the planning commission. Before you this evening is a request for a rezoning, a general development plan, and a preliminary plat for Sullivan Ranch Development located east of southeast Wyatt Road and east of southeast Litchford Road. The property is currently zoned AG County, which is the agricultural county zoning. The first request is to rezone the subject property from the AGC, the agricultural county, to an SF7, which is the single-family residential district. The property consists of two parcels, approximately 70.15 plus or minus acres in total, and is currently undeveloped. This proposal is consistent with the city's 2014 comprehensive plan, which identifies this property within the S2 specific area plan, a key part of the city's southern growth corridor. The comprehensive plan envisions the S2 area as a collection of well-connected, low-density residential neighborhoods that balance new housing with the preservation of natural features and open spaces. The plan emphasizes neighborhood connectivity, diverse lot sizes, and access to trails and amenities. The future land use policy map designates this property for low-density residential development, which is defined as less than five dwelling units per acre. The proposed development has a residential density of 3.10 dwelling units per acre, which meets the intent and directly implements the comprehensive plan long-range vision for this area. This project also fulfills the comprehensive plan's broader goals, which is to strengthen neighborhood identity through design and open space features, ensure connectivity with trail and sidewalk network, and to promote coordinated infrastructure investments that support orderly growth. The proposed development reflects the comprehensive plan's goal of transforming undeveloped land in the southern area into a cohesive and walkable neighborhood while maintaining the city's quality of life standards. The proposal also supports the city's strategic plan of 2025-2030, specifically the balanced growth priority, which focuses on growing the community strategically and proactively, identifying areas that can be efficiently served by infrastructure and municipal services. This property lies within the South Area Sewer Neighborhood Improvement District, which is established by the city to provide sanitary sewer service and funding for the approximate 1,530 acres of the planned development. The NID was designed to accommodate detached, single-family housing at the density that is proposed, ensuring that infrastructure capacity is available to support the project. The development proposes 218 detached, single-family homes at a density of 3.10 dwelling units per acre. There are seven acres of open space provided across five tracks, including walking trails, a central amenity area, and stormwater basins. Development has two access points, one from southeast Wyatt Road and one from southeast Litchford Road. Internal sidewalk and multi-use trails along Wyatt Road will enhance the pedestrian connectivity. The applicant will construct new public improvements, including roadway extensions, stormwater basins meeting the APWA 5600 standards, sewer extensions to connect to the NID system. The applicant will be required to complete several public improvements prior to construction, including past street improvements along southeast Litchford Road, intersection and site distance upgrades at southeast Wyatt and Litchford, a final stormwater management and traffic study, and dedication of rideaway, required rideaway and easements. The homes will include a mix of one- and two-story designs with masonry and siding materials. And the proposed minimal livable floor area is going to be the 1,600 square feet, which is one classification step lower than the adjacent Houdal Meadow subdivision and is consistent with the UDC transition standards. Staff has reviewed the proposal for compliance with the comprehensive plan and the Unified Development Code and finds that the proposed rezoning from the AGC to an SF7 is consistent with the comprehensive plan and surrounding residential zoning, and recommends approval with the conditions which are listed in staff report. The general development plan complies with all the UDC requirements and no deviations or modifications have been requested for the 218 single-family residential lots and open space tracks. Adequate utilities, infrastructure, and public services exist. Our plan to serve the development and staff recommends approval with conditions listed in staff report. The preliminary plat meets all subdivision standards and incorporates sound engineering and urban design principles, and staff recommends the approval with conditions listed in staff report. Here you have some of the home designs, the amenity area kind of concept plan, and then the walking trail. And at this time, I'd be happy to answer any questions from the commission may have, and the applicant is also here.
Any questions? First up? You mentioned access points off of two different roads, and I see two access points off of Litchford. Can you point out the other one?
The other one will be straight, will be the future, if I rotate this one. Hold on. I use this one because it's probably best. So there's the Litchford access, which is down to the south here, and then they are going to build out East Wyatt Road, which will be that secondary access.
And that's a dead end cul-de-sac?
Yeah, it will be a cul-de-sac for any future development pass that, if there is any.
And you mentioned a trail on your early presentation. Does this have any trails to it, or are you just talking about trails in general?
No, it does have trails to it. I'm going to use the landscape plan. But there is a trail that will connect to all internal sidewalks. There's the trail starting here at the south side at Track E, and that will go along the east side all the way up to the north side and continue on into a trail. There's two connections at the detention in Track B, and then the trail will do a loop at the end there, and then you're able to come back down.
Okay.
And then the eight-foot multi-path will be used right here at the East Wyatt Road. The south side is the eight-foot.
Thank you. I don't have any other questions. Anybody else? Is the applicant here who would like to speak on behalf of the project?
Hello. Thank you very much. Alex Kirville with CGR Construction, and we were just going to go over a brief overview of the proposed Sullivan Ranch development. So CGR, I'm a representative of CGR Builders. We are going to be the builder. The developer is going to be IMR Properties. CGR Builders, we have completed over 1,400 residential units previously. Commercial projects we have completed is at 38. We total 48?
Chair, down here. Need to name an address?
Oh, my apologies. Alex Kirville, 5605 North Verlin Drive, Parkville, Missouri, 64152.
As you were. Thank you.
Thank you. And so we've totaled at 48 employees, and over the last six years, we have grossed over 87 million in revenue. We have partnered with Reese Nichols. She is here with us today as well. For the development plan, this is a snip of the landscape design plan that Chantel shared earlier. We are looking at 70.15 acres at a three-to-one home-per-acre ratio, leaving seven acres of green space throughout the development, and this would total out to be 215 to 218 residential units. The reason for the variance is we are well aware in that southwestern corner of the southern parcel that there could be some drainage concerns where you're allocating some extra areas for drainage if necessary. The homes that we have proposed are going to be anywhere from $450,000 to $700,000, and a minimum of that 1,600 square footage being in line with one tier below the proposed development directly to the west. This is just going to be the snippet of the southern parcel. We are carrying buffer zones around every major road improvement, including the extension of East Wyatt Road and South Litchford Road running to the west of that southern parcel. We are going to have a 30-foot buffer zone between the property line and the existing tree lines. For the amenities, as you were asking of, we have four miles of walking trails with bench seating throughout the development, one acre in the kind of northern center of the parcel there for a clubhouse, amenity center, sports court, and splash pad. And we are going to be implementing 435 residential trees throughout the development. For the infrastructure improvements, that's going to be the major roads of East Wyatt and South Litchford around the development. We would be including that buffer zone to help maintain local plant life and just not impact visually the surrounding area too drastically. We are directly in line with the Neighborhood Improvement District at that three-to-one home-per-acre ratio. The maximum lots that could be supported by the pre-existing improvements that have been completed are, we are well within the 216 maximum units previously approved with the, or with the previously approved Houdal Development. My apologies. We believe that the four miles of walking trails, the community center and the sports court splash pad, that that will be able to create a unique sense of community in that area that we have seen, you know, compared to pre-approved developments. Just a brief, you know, statement on the financial impact, just kind of looking towards some other entities. So for every $1 spent on housing, we normally can see $100 or $1.30 of additional economic activity, according to the Economic Policy Institute, and building 100 homes generates approximately $121 million in local income, 2.2 of which being in taxes and other revenue. With respect to the traffic, the three-to-one housing density, we would not be exceeding any, with our traffic study that we've previously implemented, as well as the in-school traffic study that has been requested that we are going through and completing, we would by the MUTCD, we would not be exceeding any requirements within the area. With respect to the drainage, you know, we are ensuring that no peak discharge. We would not be increasing any outfalls to any area within the development and as well as that southwestern corner, doing further studies on that just to ensure that we would not be having any issues across that South Litchford-Harris Potts intersection. Our timeline, we are looking, you know, pre-construction here till the end of December 2025. Marketing would start in November until completion, and then construction, hopefully weather permitting, would begin in January into December of 2031. One other thing I would like to point out on the phasing plan is we are ensuring that, once we do hit that threshold of 30 units per one entryway, we will have two access points to each individual parcel. So not just the development as a whole, the northern parcel or the southern parcel. Once we hit that 30-unit threshold, we will be having that second entrance. And just another brief description of the house plans. Here we can see a ranch that was north of that 1,600 square foot, four bedrooms, two baths. Another ranch planned at 1736 with the additional 1,400 in the lower level, two to four bedrooms, depending on the build style, two bathrooms. A two-story design that we had, we believe works well with what has been developed in the area, 1,900 square foot, plus that extra 650 for the bonus room. And a one-and-a-half-story ranch-style design a little north of that 2,000 square foot. Four bed, three bath. So we are with our lending partners as well, offering, you know, some incentives for home buyers, whether that be down payment assistance, closing cost assistance, the first responders programs, you know, closing and down payment assistance, teacher and nursing programs, closing and down payment assistance, and the two-to-one interest rate buy-down for two years. We believe, you know, the financial impact of the development of this 215 to 218 homes, we can see an estimated population increase of that 220 to 500, and estimated taxes collected would be about $2 million post-development. So we are working with the local jurisdiction here. CGR Builders, we are going to be the general contractor. The real estate developer is going to be IMR Homes. We have Youth Build, which is going to be our community partner. Reese Nichols, our real estate partner, lending agent, First Western Trust, and then Iconic, our engineer, as well as BNA Architecture. And that would...
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anything else from the applicant? All right, thank you. We'll now move on to the public's comments section. Couple house rules. We've got a full house tonight. Just want to go over a few of those. If you're here to speak in favor of or opposition to a particular project, you will get three minutes at the microphone. Everybody that wants to have a voice will be heard tonight, no matter how long it takes. If what you want to say is essentially the same as what has already been said, please feel free, you're welcome to approach the microphone and just say what that guy said, or whatever everybody else already said. It'll make the night go a little bit faster, but we're not here to speed things up. We're here to hear everybody. That's just a nice option, especially for some that may be a little nervous for the microphone. You can just say what that guy said. And finally, the most important, the golden rule, treat others as we want to be treated. We're going to be kind to everybody, no matter what side you're on. And having said that, is there anybody here that would like to speak in favor of this project? Anybody here that would like to speak in opposition to this project? All right, we're going to work the room from left to right, right back here on the back row. Come on. Were you here when we did the swearing-in for everyone?
Yes, I was.
Okay, just making sure. I know a few people came in late, so...
Yeah, no, I was here.
Welcome. Name and address, please.
My name is Karen Evans. My address is 29614 East Harris Potts Road, and that's a Grain Valley address, so we do live in the county. So I wanted to point out, before I start, what I have down here, that the $2 million in taxes will not go to Blue Springs only. It'll go to Lee Summit as well, because half of that property, or more than half of that property, is within the Lee Summit School District. Okay, so tonight, we stand at a crossroads, a decision that will shape this community for generations. It brings to mind the opening words of the Constitution, "We, the people." So we, the people gathered here tonight, are not just voices in a room. We are the heart and soul of this community, the very people you represent. While we may not live within the city limits of Blue Springs, we are active members of the community. We shop in Blue Springs. We go to Blue Springs restaurants. We support community events. We hope that tonight, our voices will also be heard. And I ask you, will you stand with the people of this community, or will you prioritize profit over people? We all understand that growth is inevitable, but growth must be thoughtful. For more than 40 years, the development here has followed a minimum standard of two-acre lots. New development in this area needs to reflect this two-acre minimum. The two acres being more than just land. On them, families have raised children, enjoyed the serenity of country living, watched wildlife thrive, and built lasting friendships with neighbors. We have invested not only in our property, but in a way of life, one rooted in low-density habitat preservation and family values. To change that standard now would be to abandon the very character of this community, and it would appear the only reason to do so is to prioritize profit over people. The city's comprehensive development plan in 2014 outlined that new developments in zoning should be compatible with adjacent land uses and should not result in circumstances contrary to the public health, safety, especially safety, and general welfare of the residents. The development plan also states that it is the local government's responsibility to provide public services and facilities, utilization and preservation of natural resources, and transportation, system, maintenance. Yet, the city has no plans to improve the roads in this area. It is left up to the developer to provide half-road improvements. A developer who, according to newspaper reports, has been debarred from working on city subsidized projects in Kansas City, Missouri. And let me ask you this, would you be satisfied with half-road improvements in your neighborhood? You, the members of this committee, are the stewards of a finite and very precious resource. The decision tonight transcends mere zoning.
Can you wrap things up? Your three minutes is up.
Okay. You have the choice to make. Will it be one of stewardship or surrender? Thank you.
Thank you. Come on up, sir. State your name and address for the record, please.
I was sworn in. My name is Martin Underwood. I live at 29110 East Wyatt Road, Grain Valley, Missouri, 64029. You know, I'm not a member of the city because the old mayor, when he did the land across the street, and they put 220 homes with the Jason Larkins Project, years ago, they allowed us to stay out of the city. But anyway, I don't have a sense of humor. I live at 29110 East Wyatt Road, at the northeast corner of Wyatt and Litchford. There's going to be over 1,000 cars go by my driveway a day. Every one of you, think about living somewhere. These people have acreage. I have 10 acres. Most of these people have a minimum of three acres to several hundred acres. Think about 1,000 cars going about your driveway a day. Think about what your property value is going to be. You think anybody wants to buy my property with 1,000 cars go by? No. I'm going to take a big hit on the property value. Not only that, it's not safe. I have people that run down Litchford, go right through my driveway, and they miss Wyatt Road. They've come close to hitting my house. They've run over my bushes. Can you imagine 1,000 cars going down that road? No. There's other people that's going to say a lot more than what I've got to say. I'm trying to just kind of keep my composure. I'm not very happy about this whole deal. It's not going to be beneficial to anybody that lives in this area. We're not against development. If you want to put larger homes on larger acreage, it's not a problem. We're not against that. If you want to put a one-acre lot, put a nice-sized home there, it's not a problem. But when you talk about 220 residences, you've lost your mind. Seriously. Thank you for your time. I appreciate it. There's other people here that's going to bid your ear a lot more than I am.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else? Full name and address for the record, please.
My name is Tanya Parker. My address is 9008 South Litchford Road, Grain Valley, Missouri. Good evening, board members. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. While not a Blue Springs resident, this development is on the edge of where municipalities converge. But like my resident and non-resident neighbors, I come before you not to oppose progress, but to stand for responsible and ethical growth. This board has a duty to represent the best interests of the residents, not the bottom line of the budget or the profit margins of the developers. Growth should never come at the expense of integrity, transparency, or the well-being of the people who live there. The existing roads were not designed for the increased traffic this development would bring. As Wyatt transitions to Litchford, there is no opportunity for additional access points to major thoroughfares, as these 70 acres of farmland are landlocked on three sides. Seven blind corners spread from Wyatt down Litchford to Colburn Road, which despite any initiative to prevent it, will be the route a large majority of these new residents will take because of the already-present dangers of heading south on 7th Highway at Wyatt. We are talking about placing a large-volume homes on a rural road that was never designed for this level of traffic or infrastructure demand. And because the adjoining road is county, there are no plans for road widening, shoulders, or sidewalks to accommodate the influx of residents this project would bring. There are no adequate plans to address drainage or long-term capacity beyond the development. Only the blind hope that somehow it will all work itself out. For months, even years now, residents have stood up time and again to defend the character of their rural community. They've written letters, attended meetings, and voiced their concerns, only to be met with procedural hurdles and incremental encroachment. These are good people, many older lifelong residents whose spirits have been worn down by the exhaustion of fighting a system that seems determined to ignore them. Their health, their peace of mind, and their faith in fair governance have all taken a toll on their bodies. This isn't just about zoning or density. It's about trust. It's about whether the city honors its word and respects the voices of the people it claims to represent. As a Realtor of over 20 years, I can reasonably predict the future because I refuse to forget the past. The housing market is already showing signs of decline. Overbuilding in a softening market, especially in areas without the infrastructure to support it, isn't just reckless, it's unsustainable. We risk vacant homes, unfinished developments, and financial strain that will ultimately fall back on the very taxpayers who were promised protection. And the introduction of an adjacent development, when the hard-fought battle against Houdal Ridge has yet to even break ground. This community deserves more than exhaustive battles. It deserves honesty, respect, and fair representation, and I ask you to take that stand tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Who's next?
My name is David Canoust, and I live right across the street, 8312 South Litchford Road. I live right across the street from the development. And, I mean, everybody's kind of said it. We're hoping that you represent us instead of the developer for a change. We, like the young lady said here before... We, like the young lady said here before, we've come before this, I bet, six times against developments that just aren't working. And the first one was, uh, Gibson Development, and that was just a catastrophe. And trying to do the same thing, and, you know, it just, you just keep throwing this at us and throwing this at us. We are not a development in that area that needs, you know, a, a development like this. Everything is estate homes, everything. There isn't one place that's not an estate home, and you wanna throw this right after we got done with Houdal? I mean, come on, guys. This is just, this is unethical. You guys know better. This isn't how you do development. This isn't how you get people behind the things that you wanna do in this city. And we need to concentrate on the inner part of Blue Springs. Make that more viable. You don't need all this stuff on the outside to have this kinda hassle coming at you. The streets won't handle it. You can't. Yeah, and the gentleman that proposed this said that, oh yeah, the drainage will be taken care of. Kinda find that hard to believe when already we're dealing with flooding. How is he gonna stop that? He can't. All the land there that absorbs the water now is gonna be turned into sidewalks, driveways, and roads. That drainage has no place to go but down the creek that already floods the people on, uh, Harris Potts Road. Yeah, a guy right there across from that where this drains into had to redo his pond more than once to take care of this problem. And you're gonna exasperate that and put that all on one person to deal with? You think that's right? I don't think you do. Also, the traffic is just, somebody proposed, oh yeah, on, uh, Shroud Road and Adams Dairy and Wyatt Road, we'll put a roundabout. That is gonna back cars up on both, going both ways. It won't work. You, you have to think this through better. Okay? It should be like, previous gentleman said, this is our estate homes. That's the way it needs to stay. Okay? It needs to stay in that way. That way, it doesn't get overcrowded. We can handle, uh, the road that goes through there that was Litchford and Wyatt used to be a gravel road, and all they did was just macadam over the top of the gravel road. They didn't widen it. They didn't change any of the drainage on it. So it's not gonna handle your traffic. It just won't. And all they're gonna do is put a curb on it and call it good. They aren't gonna put any storm sewers. They aren't gonna do anything about the drainage that goes down into the creek behind me. That's already a problem for the people down the road. So when, when Houdal's decided to do this, they're gonna have to put a huge pond in, a retention pond, to stop the water from leaving their property. And this isn't doing it. There is no retention pond there. He says, oh yeah, we got green spaces. Green spaces isn't gonna handle all that water. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else?
Good evening. Uh, my name is Steve Lanier. I live at two nine seven oh five East Harris Potts Road. I'm just south and east of this proposed development. Um, I am here tonight to address six roads and intersections impacted by the current and future development of this area. Many intersections and roads in our community are experiencing significant increases already in traffic, heightened the potential, uh, the potentiality for accidents and creating hazardous conditions for all travelers. It is essential for us to address these issues with infrastructure improvements before introducing any new traffic pressures. While not all the following six areas are located in Blue Springs, all are in, will be impacted and require improvement measures. Wyatt and Seven Highway, we have people, um, entering a highway with a simple stop sign. Ongoing developments in this vicinity has led to substantial increase in traffic, making it imperative to consider strategic improvements to enhance the safety and efficiency at this intersection. Wyatt and Adams Dairy, traffic in Wyatt and Adams Dairy is another two-way stop, and we're seeing more and more traffic every year, thereby contributing to the growing reputation that this is a dangerous intersection. With the increase of vehicles, this area requires urgent attention to prevent future accidents and do a sure, smoother traffic. Adams Dairy and Moreland School Road, this intersection is experiencing increased traffic due to the nearby developments and the presence of a high school within a mile. The combination of these factors make it critical to evaluate and implement safety enhancements according to the rise in demand. Wyatt and Cook Intersection. This intersection is particularly problematic because Cook has hilly terrain and has blind spots. It also has the absence of shoulders, all contributing to a dangerous intersection. Addressing these geographical challenges is necessary to improve the visibility and safety of all users. Litchford and Harris Potts Road. The road at Harris Potts in Litchford measures nineteen feet wide. It's not got no shoulders, and it features, uh, steep drop-offs. The narrowness leaves minimal clearance for large vehicles like a school bus or SUVs, posing significant risks of accidents and enhancing the road to accommodate the traffic. Sorry, I lost my place. Enhancing these roads to accommodate traffic and volume and vehicle size is critical. Shroud and Culver Road. This intersection, while it's not currently within the Blue Springs, is managed by a two-way stop. It experiences high traffic volumes partly due to the cluster of restaurants there at Shroud Road. But Shroud Road is poorly maintained. It's a small rural road. It has no shoulders. I've literally hit mirrors with another truck going down that road. Litchford, Harris Potts, Shroud Road, Cook Roads, all of these are small rural roads. They're really not designed for the traffic projected by these developments. They simply allow about two feet of passing and, uh, for clearance. That doesn't include your mirrors. Right? Wyatt Road. Wyatt Road is larger. It offers three feet of clearance, and it has, I'm sorry.
That's time.
Thank you for your time.
Can you wrap it up in two, a couple sentences?
The roads need to be taken care of before any of the building starts. It's just the bottom line. Without that, we put people at risk. People at risk, animals at risk.
Thank you. Anybody else? Come on up. Name and address, please.
My name's Steve Smith, and I live at two nine five oh nine East Harris Potts Road, Grain Valley. I'm the guy with the pond in the low spot. And the basin that they got proposed is uphill from the low spot. And I don't see how that's gonna work. I don't know a lot about that, but it needs to be moved down. But I just wanna say I'm for what all these people have said, and I just don't see it working. And the, the Houdal Estates that got approved a year or so ago, they were supposed to, you know, come in there and do that road and widen Wyatt down there, and now that's on hold. And even this builder told us, uh, at the meeting that we went to a month ago that he heard that that was put off for four or five years. Well, that road's not gonna be widened, and then they're gonna put this subdivision in. And all he's in charge of is widening Litchford on one side. And with, just like what Steve was saying about all the intersections and everything, I just don't see how it's gonna work. But I am totally against that many lots in that small of an area. But I think if they, if you guys do decide that you're gonna let something like this pass, it needs to be figured out a little bit better in the, in the basin areas. And then at least do us a favor and do something to put a boundary between us and all this. I mean, there's no, there's no kinda fence or anything on Harris Potts. And we all have ponds and horses and people shoot out there and all that. And, and then the lots are gonna back right up to Harris Potts. So even if they could do some sort of, you know, area where there's a fence and a, you know, common area so that they didn't come right up to the edge, that would be helpful. But other than that, everything that everybody else has said, I agree with.
Thanks, Steve. Anybody else?
My name is Adam Cris. I live at three zero four zero four East Litchford Road, Grain Valley, Missouri, six four zero two nine. And I have been sworn in. So I live further on down Litchford. Of course, the drainage, it's always been a problem, and it's only gonna get worse. But what the gentleman earlier had brought up, two hundred and eighteen homes, two entrances that lead to the same road. It's like having, you know, two driveways right there that you're expecting that many cars to come out of. But they said the population increased two twenty to five hundred. And with two hundred and eighteen houses, you know, that's one person living in each house to maybe two people. You put kids in there, all teenagers, all driving to school, you're looking at close to fifteen hundred to two thousand cars every day, twice a day. And it's just not built for it. On Litchford to Wyatt Road, or from Wyatt and Litchford, there's forty-eight houses on that road. Harris Potts and Carr, there's twelve houses. On Cook Road, between Wyatt and Major, there's eleven houses. That is seventy-one houses total. And they're planning, they've already agreed to quadruple that, and now we're doing it again. That's gonna greatly affect the seventy-one homes directly on the road. But it was mentioned that there's gonna be seven acres of open space when most houses already have that seven acres of open space per house. So that really doesn't make sense either. They mentioned four miles of walking trails. We have the roads, the roads to walk on, because there's not much traffic right now. I can take my two daughters, walk down the road, walk twenty minutes, two cars pass by. Nobody wants to live with any more than that. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anybody else? Last chance? All right. The public comment section of the public hearing will be over. Is now over. Any further discussion from staff? Probably got a couple questions up here, but you may address some of them preemptively.
Yeah, we, we're happy to answer any questions on any of the topics that, that got brought up. Just some of the clarification statements on these. Yes, the property is half in the Blue Springs School District and half in Lee Summit. Half-road improvements will be required adjacent to the street or the road on Litchford. The Houdal Meadows property will be required to do half-road improvements on the other side, the west side of Litchford, uh, as, uh, in addition to Wyatt Road for Houdal Meadows. Uh, and then there is a restriction on the number of permits for Houdal Meadows, uh, before they have to do Wyatt Road fully, uh, developed or fully improved both sides of the street. Drainage issues, our, our city engineer is here to address those. Uh, but generally speaking, anytime a neighborhood or any type of development, uh, is built, uh, they have to retain the water on the site at the same rates, uh, and then, uh, release that, um, at the same historic rates as what's currently on the property today. So drainage issues, uh, are not anticipated to get any worse, uh, than they are now and will, um, get better because the water will be detained on-site and then released at those historic rates. Um, some of the issues about traffic and roadways. Um, there is a traffic signal planned for Seven Highway and Wyatt Road as soon as the, uh, Snack Attack Gas Station, um, is completed, and they are under construction, albeit slowly, but they are under construction. Uh, once that is finished before they can open, they have to install a traffic signal at Wyatt and Seven Highway. Wyatt Road from Seven Highway to Adams Dairy Parkway is, uh, in the capital improvement program to be, uh, widened and improved next year for, uh, the, the width, uh, from Seven Highway to Adams Dairy Parkway. Um, the final plans for the intersection at Wyatt and Adams Dairy Parkway are not finalized yet. Um, a traffic circle has been, um, envisioned, but those plans have not been finalized yet. Um, trying to work with engineering, um, on how best to handle the intersection there because right now it's just, um, one, you know, the north-south direction has no stop. East-west, uh, on Wyatt is a stop condition. And so trying to, you know, the city well aware of the need to improve that intersection and has it in its sights to get done soon. Yeah, Litchford, uh, you know, Shroud and Culver is in the city of Lake Lotawanna. Wyatt and Cook, there are proposed improvements that would be needed with the Houdal Meadows Project. And the Litchford and Harris Pot, Potts intersection will be, um, and our engineer can describe this more, but the, the half-road improvements will, uh, make that intersection a little bit better down there. So if there are any other issues that the planning commissioner or any of the commissioners would like to ask of staff or our city engineer, we're happy to answer any other questions.
For proximity, could you remind us how far away Houdal Estates is to this proposed development? Go back a few slides to the area.
Yeah, I'm gonna have to rotate it back. So Houdal Meadows is right here. So it's literally across the street.
Thank you.
Has that one officially been delayed, as we've heard, or it's still on track?
There's been no delay that I've been made aware of from the developer. He is currently under construction. Um, he also is building the Houdal Ridge neighborhood up at Major Road and Adams Dairy Parkway and has recently started building houses in the Houdal Acres side, which is on the west side of Adams Dairy Parkway, uh, and Major Road, so up Adams Dairy Parkway. And then, uh, when he brought his development forward just last summer, it was anticipated that he, he would start getting, moving on this project once he got substantially further along with the Houdal Acres project. But, um, his plans are approved. And so, you know, the timing of which, uh, you know, when developers decide to, you know, pull the trigger, so to speak, on when they're gonna move from one project to the next, usually is, is a factor that we're not privy to. But I've heard no plans of him to pull out of that development or to delay it by any.
And I think we need some clarification on the statement that the builder has been barred from working projects in Kansas City?
Yeah, that is completely not applicable to anything related to what's going on in Blue Springs. Um, any developer work they do in other cities, uh, you know, the, the project tonight is being proposed by the developer, and pertinent information is relevant only to what is being proposed in Blue Springs.
Chair.
Yes.
Yeah, Mr. Allen, is there, you talked about the improvements, and I just wanna make just a quick clarification on the road, um, segment from Wyatt and Adams Dairy to the corner of the Houdal area. Is there any improvement plans for that section?
It's anticipated, so the way that road improvements work in the city is that developers are required to do half-road improvement, improvements for the develop, for the frontage of their property. Um, and so when the Houdal Meadows Project came through, they were proposing to do road improvements for the section of Wyatt Road from Cook to Litchford, and then from Litch, from Wyatt, uh, Litchford between Wyatt and Harris Potts. Um, when that got approved, uh, the city council imposed a condition that said, by, I believe, the ninety-ninth or maybe it was the two hundred and twentieth building permit for that development, somehow Wyatt Road needs to be improved to full width improvements between Adams Dairy Parkway and Cook Road. And the timing of that may be the responsibility of the Houdal Meadows developer. Or if it happens that perhaps one of the two more vacant parcels on either side of the north and south side of Wyatt Road directly adjacent to Adams Dairy Parkway. If one of those properties is proposed for development, by the time this, the Houdal Meadows gets to that point, then maybe they would do those road improvements. So it, it is planned to be developed, um, and to be widened, um, as needed for, to meet those thresholds. But it was based upon the Houdal Meadows Project. Uh, this development, uh, as it doesn't really abut Wyatt Road at all from that distance, under the city code, it's not required to do it. But the timing of these two projects at the same time, uh, we believe will, will, um, link up together nicely so that the road improvements are made. And prior to us just, you know, and the way that the city plating process works is public improvements are required to be installed prior to building permits being issued. So any road improvements on Litchford would need to be installed upfront. And, and the same would go for, for the Houdal Meadows Project, except for that section that's off-site between Adams Dairy Parkway and Cook Road.
Okay, thank you.
Chair.
Yes.
I have a question. What was the buffer zone between this district, this housing section, and the homes behind it? There was- And the homes behind it, there was, somebody raised a concern about that issue. What was the buffer area?
I believe they were talking about the buffer area from. On southeast Harris Potts, there is not a required buffer because that is. Um, it bud ups adjacent properties county. So in our code, there is not a required buffer that needed, such as the fence or anything like that.
The developer, uh, on their site plan has provided, um, landscape buffers, um, along. Litchford, the future connection to Wyatt Road, uh, the trail corridor to the property to the east. And along Harris Potts.
I thought I remembered something.
As you see down there, uh, the, the clouded lines. Uh, that is proposed to be a tree preservation area along, on, along Harris Potts.
Thank you.
I got a couple of things, and then we'll see if anybody else has anything. I wanted to earlier just comment on, 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 on a gentleman's statement. Point of clarification, um, it was said that, you know, we bring this project and we this and. Just publicly, I wanna get out, this is not our, our project as commissioners, this is not the city staff's project. This is the developer's project. And if you were developing, you'd want your due course and time to come for approval as well, so. We are commissioners, we're appointed, we're not paid, we're just citizens. Um, so I just wanted to clarify that. Uh, and. Um, secondly. The roads just seem very confusing to me. Um, ha- I understand the half rule, but, but the complexity of the timing of. When the development comes in from Houdal, we'll defer to, um, who does which road here. Um, I was, I did very much like to hear the fact that. The city requires that the road improvements be made prior to billing permits being issued. But for clarification, is that just half of the road that the applicant is responsible for? And, and if so, then that would leave the other half undone, is, is that fair to assume? Is that a correct statement?
Yes, developers are typically required by code to build the frontage improvements adjacent to their property. Um, unless it's deemed for them to do full road improvements for half the distance. But as we saw, a- and have seen in other developments throughout this area, when that has been utilized. Um, for example, up on Major Road, um, a lot of those developments did half road improvements. Or full road improvements for half of their property frontage, and it left gaps. In Major Road from Seven Highway to Adams Dairy Parkway for years, and then the city had to come back in and connect those. And so, um. The half road improvements is, is the developer's fair share of contributing, uh, to the infrastructure needs. Um, and is equitable in order to not put an extreme burden on one developer versus the other.
It's been that way a long time.
A very long time, yes.
I understand that, and I agree with that. I struggle with it in regards to this project in the sense that. These citizens that live close to it and other citizens and non-citizens that would be using those roads. They may be using a road that's only half improved, that's a, a, a problem that I have. Despite how long that rule has, has been in place, it does not take away my concern. For the, how skinny the road is going out there, because I drove it multiple times, um. Any discussion with the applicant during the planning process about the actual roads in the subdivision in the sense that. They're just so grid-like and so straight. I've always been a proponent of kinda shifting it up with some curves and stuff, because it helps limits people's speed in subdivisions. Um, so two questions, was there any discussion about that, because this is pretty, pretty grid-like? And, um. If it does get approved and built, and there is a problem, does the city have the right to go in and talk about speed bumps? Or is that something that's HOA or the subdivision?
These would be dedicated as city streets, um, the city does not have, uh, a definitive traffic calming policy adopted as of today. Um, I believe that, or, you know, our city engineer could chime in on this, but, um. Typically in residential subdivisions such as this, uh, grid-like patterns are, are not uncommon. And actually result in slower speeds, because people have to make sharp returns at those intersections. Rather than a windy road where they don't really have to come to a ninety-degree turn. And so I don't think there's any definitive evidence that, you know, the, the cul-de-sac type development or longs windy roads. Um, because as somebody comes in off of Wyatt, uh, and then turns left. The really, the only straight shot is just to go past about, you know, ten houses on one side of the street, twenty in total. Before you have, they have to make a turn and go one way or the other. And then on the south side, they come in off of Wyatt and make that turn immediately there. And then they have to stop and then make two turn, make, you know, choose a right or a left, so, um. You know, if, if W, you have anything else to add on that, there are a couple of straight sections. Um, such as the one on the east-west section that then curves to go north-south on the south end. Um, but, uh, you know, these would all be, I believe, twenty-five mile an hour streets, local streets.
Thank you. Any other discussions or questions for staff before we hear again from the applicant if they wanna follow up with anything, anything else up here?
Yeah, Chair.
Yes.
Yeah, I'll just kinda state, um, kinda my concerns currently are, one, the stated, uh, infrastructure leading up to the site. And kinda the timing of those and whether that's gonna happen and when it's gonna happen. And then the second is the kinda density gradient, I guess. Where going from SF twelve to SF seven, then to kinda these larger lots. Uh, I think it seems out of place from a density standpoint.
Yeah, I had something. It sounds like the engineer is not knowing exactly what is going on, because Justin Markin had agreed. Uh, Ron Fowler had entered the agreement, uh, when Justin Markin's two-hundred-and-twenty. Homes are gonna be built, and he would do both sides of the road on Wyatt from Cook to Litchford. He's not aware of it, I guess, but it's, it was agreed by Ron Fowler and Justin Markin, so that's a piece of information you need.
Like sir.
And not only that, has anybody considered?
Sir, you've had your three minutes, we're gonna go ahead and, and leave it there, we appreciate you, we have to follow the, the, the rules of the meeting and the timing. Any other discussion or comments that the applicant would like to address? Name an address, and have you been sworn in, sir?
Hey, uh, Charles Robinson, president of CJR and IMR Homes, uh. Uh, forty-eight, forty-four oh eight, uh, West Hundred Fifty-seventh Street, Overland Park, Kansas. We headquartered in Raytown, Missouri, uh, we are a developer and a builder. And, uh, there was a comment made about the disbarment, I do wanna address that a little bit. Um, primarily, uh, we're, we're one of the largest small businesses in Kansas City area. Fastest growing in the past eight years, um, we actually. Probably built over five hundred thousand square foot of the KCI Airport project, uh, during that period of time. Um, we had some carpenters that was part of our company, and we had some small businesses and things like that. Was subcontractors to us, over, uh, probably a fifty-six million dollar project with over two-hundred-and-fifty employees. So there was, uh, a small business minority, uh, painting contractor that worked under our subcontract agreement. Followed all the rules, paid all the wage order reporting, uh, we paid our subcontractor. But they refused, they didn't pay the exact amount to their own employees, that was a W-two employee. And because of that, uh, we were the one that took the hit for that as a company. Uh, it was nothing that we were, it was a disbarment basically for one year, we're three months into that one year right now. Um, it's not stopping us from doing work, uh, uh, in the city of Kansas City, we're building privatized right now. Uh, we do have a development going on in, uh, Blue Springs, Missouri. Very similar to this, to where we're doing infill housing, affordable housing for four-hundred-and-fifty lots. That the commissioner there has, and city council has approved, and has not delayed our projects. Uh, we're doing this in Nebraska, Omaha, Nebraska area as well. Um, this project is, you know, near and dear to our hearts here, um. Um, I understand the concerns here from the, the, the neighborhood, and we had a meeting with the neighborhood. Uh, a few weeks ago, or a few, few weeks ago, just to address this, prepare for this, so that we can. Look at options in our own development and design that could be more suitable for the team and for, for the community. Uh, our, our, our model is about building communities, um, we wanna be here, we wanna develop here. Um, this project is, uh, is funded, allocated, ready to go. Um, I don't see delays from our side from, from a builder developer standpoint. Um, I can't speak for other developers, um. But, you know, if, if, you know, we are here to work with the city, we are here to work with the neighborhood community. Uh, we're not trying to make enemies by any means whatsoever. Um, we wanna, I felt like our design is suitable for what the. Building requirements and then what the city, uh, long-term, uh, requirements were. I believe we've met those needs, and, you know, we're just, we're not trying to make any enemies, enemies at all, we're not trying to figure out. Uh, how we make the biggest dollar here, that's not the case at all, we're trying to build, uh, an opportunity for. Uh, homes can come in and, and, and have a, a, a very good community within the community, uh, of Blue Springs, so. Um, we have nothing to hide, uh, and, uh, you know, we, we, we built, uh, all over the Midwest and, and, uh. Um, we, we look forward to opportunity to build here as well, thank you.
Charles, can you make a correction on the development you're currently doing? You stated it was in the city of Blue Springs, when we currently don't have.
No, not city of Blue Springs, uh, city of, uh, Kansas City, Kansas, I apologize.
That was my first question.
In Kansas City, Kansas, yeah, unified, uh, wine dot county, so that's where we're building.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Chair.
Yes.
I have a question, please jog my memory, this bumps up to Houdal. And Houdal's homes are a little larger than this division's homes would be. Houdal's homes sit on what kind of acreage per home?
They were, uh, SF twelve zoning with a minimum lot size of twelve thousand.
And these lot sizes are again?
Minimum of seventy-two hundred per city code.
Twelve thousand versus seventy-two.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
What is the ratio of the homes per acreage of Houdal? Uh, roughly?
I believe it was. Close to two.
Okay.
Two dwelling units an acre.
Alright, anything else up here? Alright, I will close the public hearing. If there's one, I would ask for a motion on the rezoning portion of this project, and we've got three things to vote on.
Chair.
Yes.
I move to approve rezoning RZ zero-seven-two-five-nine-six-four-six Sullivan Ranch with the staff conditions.
Have a motion about a second?
Second.
Second, roll call please, Tracy.
Of course. Commissioner Humphrey?
No.
Commissioner Stokenberry?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Sanderson?
Nay.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes.
Commissioner Howe?
Yes.
Commissioner Ingersoll?
No.
Chairperson Henning?
No. Four to four, that's a tie, and that's results in the passage or non-passage?
Not passage.
Non-pass, yeah, not pass. I would ask for a motion for the general development plan portion of this project.
Chair.
Yes.
I move to approve the, the general development plan?
Yes.
Yes, sir, uh, GDP zero-seven-two-five-nine-six-four-seven for Sullivan Ranch with the staff conditions.
A second?
A second.
I have a motion and a second, Tracy, roll call please.
Of course. Commissioner Stokenberry?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Sanderson?
No.
Commissioner Graham?
Aye.
Commissioner Howe?
Aye.
Commissioner Ingersoll?
No.
Commissioner Humphrey?
No.
Chairperson Henning?
No.
Alright, four-four.
Alright, four to four again, and the final one, the preliminary plat portion, I would ask for a motion.
Chair.
Yes.
Uh, move to approve preliminary plat zero-seven-two-five-nine-six-four-eight for Sullivan Ranch with the staff conditions.
Have a motion about a second?
Second.
Oh, a second. Let's roll call this too, please.
Yeah, of course. Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Sanderson?
No.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes.
Commissioner Howe?
Aye.
Commissioner Ingersoll?
No.
Commissioners Humphrey?
No.
Commissioner Stokenberry?
Aye.
Okay, four-four.
Alright, no for me, um, alright.
Sorry.
That does not pass, that's okay, just for clarity. Recording?
In my own head.
Um, alright, so we're done with that one?
Yes, well, I would just like to say that those would be a. Not recommended of approval to city councils for the next meeting.
The city council still hears them.
Yes, this will still go forward to city council on November third, I believe it is.
Yep.
Yes.
Alright, that finishes that one, we're moving on to the public hearing for agenda numbers number three, six, and nine. The general development plan GDP zero-nine-two-five-nine-six-nine-zero, and preliminary plat PP zero-eight-two-five-nine-six-seven-zero. For Colburn Farms. I'll ask for exhibits from our city attorney, James Noel.
The city would like to hand our exhibits one through eight.
Alright, thank you. When you're ready, Ms. Frye? Tell us about it. Yes, um, another public hearing, thank you. Uh, any, anybody that would like to speak in favor of or opposition to or about this project in any sense whatsoever. Please rise and be sworn in collectively together as a group.
I do. So Chantel Frye, nine-zero-three West Main Street, Blue Springs, six-four-zero-one-four, and I have been sworn in. Good evening, chairperson and members of the planning commission. Before you this evening is a request for a rezoning, a general development plan, and a preliminary plat for Colburn Farms. Located at two-six-one-zero-zero East Colburn Road. The first request is to rezone the subject property from a GVC, which is the general business commercial. To an SF seven, single-family residential for the property located at this address. And this would be for a development of thirty-four single-family residential lots with a walking trail, three open space tracks. On approximately sixteen-point-six-seven acres. The proposed SF seven, single-family zoning for the development is consistent with the surrounding uses and the long-range vision for this area. The comprehensive plan. The comprehensive plan designates this area as neighborhood, supporting residential living in a connected pattern of streets and blocks. With access to parks and civic spaces. Additionally, the S-one area plan identifies the si- site as a part of a mixed-density neighborhood. Which envisions a blend of detached housing and small-scale multi-unit housing. The proposal aligns with these designations by introducing a modest dens- density, single-family neighborhood. With pedestrian connectivity and open space amenities. The proposed development also supports the ci- city's strategic plan of twenty-twenty-five, twenty-thirty. Particularly the balanced growth priority, which emphasizes thoughtful, well-service expansion. This area is within the South Area Sewer Neighborhood Improvement District, established to ensure adequate sewer capacity and infrastructure. Prior to the development. The project utilizes existing city utilities and services. Colburn Farms will be developed in one single phase with two access points proposed along Colburn Road. A five-foot ADA compliant sidewalk will be provided along both sides of the internal streets and along Colburn Road frontage. Along the frontage is also a proposed six-foot, uh, masonry style wall. A walking trail and over five acres of open space are proposed, which is exceeding the ten percent open space requirement. And the minimum lot size is seven, one, seven thousand two hundred square feet, which is consistent with the SF seven zoning. And the minimum livable floor area proposed is one thousand seven hundred square feet. Which is consistent with the nearby minimum livable floor area of the estates at Chapman Farms. The homes will include a mix of one and two-story elevations with masonry and decorative elements. And here are some of the concepts of the housing. Staff finds Colburn Farms' proposed rezoning and general development plan is in accordance with the comprehensive plan and the S one area plan. It also supports compatible residential infill along Colburn Road. And promotes a cohesive transition between residential and commercial uses. And is also compliant with the Unified Development Code of Blue Springs. Based on these findings, staff recommends approval of the rezoning with the conditions listed in the staff report. The general development plan with the, uh, conditions last, listed in the staff report. And the preliminary plat with the five conditions listed in the staff report. And I'd be happy to answer any questions. And the applicant is also present.
Thank you, Ms. Frye. Any questions for staff before we hear from the applicant? In regards to the square footage of these homes, um. We typically allow and recommend, uh, two lo- uh, levels. Of separation in between.
It'd be one step down.
Is it one step down?
Mm-hmm.
How does this fit into that?
Uh, well, the estates at Chapman Farm, their minimum livable floor area on their final plat is one thousand seven hundred. And they're proposing the same here. But we do go by even, so it'd be sixteen hundred as the minimum, because there is no such thing as seventeen hundred goes sixteen hundred to eighteen hundred.
Okay. So similar-sized homes, just much smaller lots?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. That's the only question I have at this time. Anybody else up here before we hear from the applicant? Is applicant here?
Robert Walquist, eight twelve Columbia Street, uh, Lee Summit, Missouri. Um, we, uh, are proposing a single-family development instead of the commercial. Use that this is proposed, or this is, um, zoned right now, so. The owner felt like this would be a better fit for this location, um, with the regional basin right there. Has a, a good amenity if it's maintained, but. Right now, it's not being maintained. It's owned by the development to the north Chapman Farms, I believe. And, uh, so we're in negotiations and trying to figure out who's supposed to be maintaining that with staff and they're, they're running that track, so. But I'm here to answer any questions you guys have regarding the development.
I don't have any questions. Any questions up here? All right, thank you.
You bet.
Anybody in the audience who would like to speak in favor of this project? Anybody in the audience who would like to speak in opposition to? Anybody would like to speak in opposition to this project? And was there, did I miss somebody that wanted to speak before that in favor of? Come on up, sir. State your name and full address, please.
Steve Bailey, eighty-eight oh seven Highway one thirty-one, Odessa, Missouri. Uh, this property was owned by John and Nikki Sarai. And they came to me, I've known them for years and years, and, and they came to me to, uh, develop this property. Uh, and we're actually joint venturing together on this. Uh, my background is. Uh, we actually, my wife and I actually own cat excavation also. And we've done many developments over the last thirty years, so many of them here in Blue Springs, and they've all been successful developments and. Something as a developer, we're on projects that I develop, I, I really feel strongly about restrictions on. I know here sixteen hundred foot minimums, but rather it's a twelve hundred square foot home or twenty-five hundred square foot home. About what the house on the outside is made of. And, and in, in our restrictions, we will have the, the, the most in-depth, highest quality of exterior finishes that possible. But, uh, like, like I said again, we, we are just joint venturing this with John and Nikki Sarai.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, anybody else in favor of? Opposition to? Name and full address, please.
Yes, uh, my name is John Easley. My address is nine three zero four Southwest Orchid Court, Lee Summit, Missouri, six four zero six four. It's a Lee Summit address, but it's the state of Chapman Farms. First, I want to lodge my objection, um, just get that on the record. I don't think this hearing should be held because I actually requested the plans. Uh, back in October tenth from you, uh, I, and I, it was probably just an oversight, no big deal. I was promised when the, when the first, when the meeting was originally planned, it got canceled. And I was told that when the packets that you guys received went out, that I would receive the plans. I did not receive those. So this is the first I've seen this. So I'd like to, can I get my three minutes back? I wanted to lodge my complaint first.
Uh, you got two and a half, so let's just see how you go.
Okay, so I, I want to correct some things first. Um, first, um, this. The city told you that the, the square footage of the homes of the state of Chapman Farms, let me do this first. I am the president of the HOA of the, um, estates of Chapman Farms. I represent lawyers, judges, um, police officers, firefighters, teachers, blue collar and white collar workers. These aren't our first homes. These are our second, third homes. We built these up through previous homes. We built our equity and got to these homes. We were, we, you just heard that our homes have to have a minimum square footage of seventeen hundred square feet. That's factually inaccurate. The square footage on our main floor has to be seventeen hundred square feet. Our homes are not seventeen hundred square foot. So that's factually inaccurate. I heard in the Sullivan Farms, um, that she said that, um, it's neighborhood identity, that there's orderly growth co- and a cohesive plan. And that they actually in fact met with the builder. I don't know who these people are. Never met them before in my life. It would have been nice to meet with them, so we could have discussed this. So they could have had the facts, like our homes have seventeen hundred square feet. But let's go into this real quick. About the walking trails, that's nice. I wonder if those walking trails are going to hook into ours, because the last three times I've spoken to you all, and it's a pleasure to every time I speak to you, about every biennial time. But the last three times, those trails are going to hook into ours. Who's going to pay for the upkeep? Because we just spent twenty-six thousand doll- twenty-six thousand dollars on our trails to fix them. To fix them and reseal them. I know last time, good sir, that you said that, um, that it wasn't a problem, but it is a problem to us when we're spending our own money to do that. So for the fourth time, I'd like to know if they're going to hook into ours, who's going to pay for it? If it's going to be you guys, I'll gladly send you the bill every time we fix it. It's about twenty-six thousand dollars. Um, and then in the presentation, I thought I heard multi-unit housing. I just want to clear up, is it multi-unit housing or is it single? Family housing?
It's a single-family home.
Okay, fantastic. Um, and then something I want you guys to notice, a couple of things. Number one is the distance from the, the east road to Seven Highway. Because Seven Highway is just east of there. What is the distance to that? As a former, I'm a retired police officer, I can tell you, that's a hell of a lot, sorry, heck of a lot of traffic for people to try to get on Colburn Road. Especially on Seven Highway. Something you may want to consider. And also, I don't know if the builder and developer have told you this, but right east of there is a little place called, um, Station Seven. Can I get like thirty seconds?
Give me thirty more seconds.
I appreciate you, sir. It, the builder and developer may not have told you this, but S- Station Seven's right there. When they try to sell those homes, they better do it in winter time, because I can tell you, spring, summer, and fall, what happens in Station Seven is they play live music. The new buyers may find it not so whimsical. On a, on a weekend night to be trying to go to bed when the live bands are playing until ten or eleven o'clock at night. So these are things that you may want to consider. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else like to speak in opposition to this project? Come on up, name and address, please.
Tim McCullough, ninety-one oh two Southwest Twelfth Street, Lee Summit, six four zero six four. Google says Blue Springs sometime, so I'm in Chapman Farms Estates also, part of, uh, what John was talking about. I really don't have much else to add to what John said. I agree with everything he said. It's very concerning to see this for the first time, uh, tonight and be able to react and comment on it, so I would object to. Not having that material ahead of time to look at also. Just visually seeing two entrances to something like that off Colburn Road. Has to be a concern. Knowing how hard it is to get on and off of Colburn Road into Chapman Farms Estates already. And it's just interesting changing it from. Commercial zoning to residential zoning, knowing the points that John pointed about, uh, Station Seven and the area to the north of Station Seven, so. I'll leave it at that. I thank you for the time. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Any other public comments for or against? All right, I will close the public hearing section. Uh, anything else from staff? Any notes, any clarifications?
Uh, yeah, we're, again, happy to answer any questions that you have. Um, there was a complaint that the packet was not sent to residents. Prior to tonight's hearing, staff is not required by the city code to do that. It was posted online. Uh, and that's the same notification that you all received at that packet and the plans were available. That's what the code requirement is, is that we post that online. We're not obligated to mail it out to different residents. Um, if there was a miscommunication on that or a, a promise that we would do that and we didn't. I apologize for that, but that does not derail this public hearing or the ability of this planning commission to make a decision based on that tonight. There is no requirement in the city code right now for a community meeting. Developers are not required to meet with surrounding residents prior to. Uh, bringing forward a public, uh, proposal to the planning commission or city council. It's often recommended by staff for them to do that so that they can understand some of the concerns. And if, uh, in hearing those, they can try to address some of those through the, the design of the neighborhood. Um, or if there's site-specific things that they could do to, you know, for drainage, traffic, things of those, uh, you know, site design for it. Then, then that's that opportunity for, but again, there is no city code requirement for that. Um, I do have the staff report for the estates of Chapman Farms first plat. That was approved in twenty thirteen and that reclassified all the homes in the estates of Chapman Farms. Uh, from what was a eighteen hundred square foot minimum to a sixteen hundred square foot minimum for ranch-style homes. With a three-car garage and from twenty-six hundred square feet, uh, to twenty-two hundred square feet for two-story homes. So, uh, the minimum for the estates of Chapman Farms per city code. Is the sixteen hundred square feet class F. And so, uh, that is what. Our ability to require that of an adjacent development is, is that sixteen hundred square feet. And yes, the proposed plan would connect into the trail systems as it is a goal of the comprehensive plan. Uh, to have an interconnected trail system, uh, in and around the city.
I'll weigh in here just a second and then you'll have a chance to, uh, follow up. I don't mean to get in the middle of it, but I, I think it's, if somebody doesn't send you something, you reach out and ask for it. All, all, all due respect. I forget all the time. People forget on me, and sometimes it's on me to follow up with the person, so. I, I guess, um, in, in general purposes and also, um, standing up for staff. Um, if I know a project is, is simmering in my subdivision, I'm going to be keeping an eye on the website and, and I just think that that's proper and. Mike was mentioning square footage amounts, and when we're here talking about new subdivisions and new developments. Maybe he didn't clarify it with main floor, but it's always, um, the minimum required, so, um. Just clarify that. And then having said that, um, any further discussion from the applicant? Come on up.
Yes, so. First and foremost, and, and I'm going to say this as respectfully as I can. So I respect everything you guys do and I understand, um, and. It's difficult for me to sit here and, and listen to, it's not the city's project, when it feels like he is. He is the proxy for the developer. But I'm going to say this as clearly as I can. I will say you, the city should save themselves the mailing cost. When I get something in the mail from the city that says, hey, we are having a hearing on this date on a development that affects you. If you desire to see the plans, here's an email address, email them, we will send them to you. That's exactly what I got. So I did as what was directed for me by government officials, okay? I'm, I'm a retired cop. I understand the, that the responsibility of me is, if I want to see them, I should email a city official, and I did that, okay? I'm not mad. I'm, I understand, things happen. I, I'm cool with that.
We're all human beings.
But the onus isn't on me. It's on them, okay? Not me. So don't, it's unfair for the city to come back onto me and say, well, you should have followed up. The onus is on them, not me. Additionally, I will gladly produce to this learned body, to that kind gentleman over there. The, um, ordinances and CCRs of the, the states of Chapman Farms to tell you the main square footage. Main floor square footage of the estates at Chapman Farms is seventeen hundred square feet, not the square footage of the home. Main floor square footage. I understand what the ordinance says. Completely understand. I want to make it crystal clear that my house is not seventeen square, seventeen hundred square foot. Okay? I appreciate that. Thank you.
Anything else up here, commissioners?
The, uh, part, if I could, Chair, the part about, um, who's responsible for the payment of the trails. Uh, they would still be responsible for the upkeep of their trails, just as this neighborhood would be responsible for the upkeep of their trails. Is that fair assessment?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, thank you.
So in regards to the, the, the cost of connection. Who pays for that? I would assume, would it be the, the new subdivision that's, that's matching up to another trail? That would be, that would be this project's cost?
To, um, extend any trail connection?
Or to meet, I understand there was a concern about this trail meeting a trail at the states of Chapman Farm, and who was going to pay for it?
I will allow Ms. Frye to do that. Um. Perhaps there is some confusion on that. Typically, whenever a subdivision does connect to trails. Um, we do want them to try to connect to adjacent trails. Chantel just pointed out that it does look like that this trail does not connect. Uh, but if it did, then the, the developer of this subdivision would be required to pay for the entire length and connection to that trail. But there, there was a miscommunication on that one.
So this trail does not connect to the trails that are in the states of Chapman?
No, there's a, a trail that goes along Colburn and then comes up the east side of the lots near the detention pond and then comes back in.
Okay.
Near track fifteen or lot fifteen.
All right.
And I guess, Chair, I have a question. I guess I'm confused on, uh, the concern about the cost of the trail. If this. If this subdivision is going to be responsible for putting in the trail in its subdivision. You appeared to be concerned that you would have to pay that cost, but where, what, why would you show concern over that?
That's, it's simple, man, because our trail, I mean, I, I'm, I, I, first and foremost, I'm not a leaves, I'm a city folk and men, pal. But here's the deal, our trail actually is a trail that goes through woods. The trail, you look at that trail right there, you walk along Colburn Road, so I, I'm not much for walking along the city street. So our trail will receive higher volume. So when we maintain our trail, our trail is almost a mile, that trail is what? Quarter, maybe? Who, who's going to have the higher volume of traffic? Who's going to walk more on our trail? Who's going to have to maintain our trail because more people, we're going to use our trail more, they're going to use our trail more, who's going to have to pay for it? We will. Because our HOA supports it. Do they have an HOA?
Yeah, and, and so your people, you don't believe will come down and use any part of their trail?
No disrespect, but no.
Okay.
I don't understand why the trails have to be connected.
I just heard, I just heard they're not going to be.
They're not going to be connected.
They're not contained in the HOA property. I don't understand why we're still having this conversation, because the trails are not connected.
Okay. All due respect, sir, but in her statement, when she opened, she said it goes along with parks and civic spaces. There's no parks and civic spaces over there. I don't see care for the, we disperse.
Anything else up here? On my left? Nope, all right. I will close the public hearing. And I will ask and see if there's a motion for the rezoning portion of the first of three portions of this project.
Chair.
Yes.
I'd move to approve a rezoning RZ zero two five nine six six eight for Colburn Farms.
Of a motion, I have a second?
Second.
A second. Roll call, please. Tracy?
Commissioner Sanderson?
Aye.
Commissioner Graham?
Aye.
Commissioner Howe?
Aye.
Commissioner Ingersoll?
Aye.
Commissioner Humphrey?
Aye.
Commissioner Stokenberry?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Chairperson Hennig?
Aye. I would ask for motion for the general development plan portion of this project.
Chair?
Of a motion.
Moved to approve general development plan, GDP zero eight two five nine six nine zero for Colburn Farms with the staff, the one staff condition.
And a second?
Second.
Roll call, please. Tracy?
Commissioner Graham?
Aye.
Commissioner Howe?
Aye.
Commissioner Ingersoll?
Aye.
Commissioner Humphrey?
Aye.
Commissioner Stokenberry?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Sanderson?
Aye.
Chairperson Hennig?
Aye.
All ayes.
Both of those items will be heard by the city councils. They're meeting on November third, 2025, and meeting is at 6:00 PM. One more, ask for motion for the preliminary plat portion of this project.
Chair?
Yes.
Moved to approve preliminary plat, PP zero eight two five nine six seven zero for Colburn Farms with the five staff conditions.
I have a motion, how about a second?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. All right, moving on. I will open the public hearing for agenda item four, five, and twelve, the rezoning, RZ zero five two five nine six four four. Plan Development Concept Plan, PDC zero seven two five nine six four five, and Plan Development Final Plan, PDF zero nine two five nine six eight two for Rampage Athletics. I will ask for exhibits from our city attorney, James Noel.
The city elected our exhibits one through eight.
Thank you, James. All those that are here that would like to speak about, in favor of, or against this is, or against this project, please stand and be sworn in collectively together.
I do.
All right. When you're ready, Ms. Frye?
Chantel Frye, nine oh three West Main Street, Blue Springs, six four zero one four, and I have been sworn in. Before you this evening is a request for a rezoning, a PD concept plan, and a PD final plan for Rampage Athletics located at two zero zero one Northwest Ninth Street. The property is currently zoned MF fourteen for modern density multifamily district. First is to request for the rezon to the property from an MF fourteen, the modern density multifamily district, to a PDC, a planned development commercial, which would specifically permit the use of assembly and an indoor recreation at this location. The 2014 comprehensive plan included the subject properties as neighborhoods, which are defined as an area for residential living arranged in connected pattern of streets and blocks to provide access to civic and neighborhood amenities. The comprehensive plan also states that the area designated as a neighborhood should have connections to gathering places of neighborhood center to meet daily needs. The intent of the PD zoning district is to encourage unique and high-quality neighborhoods, commercial or mixed-use development, through an integrated development plan that provides flexibility to the standard zoning district regulations. Staff has reviewed the rezoning request under the nine review criteria included in the staff report, and finds that this request is in accordance with the comprehensive plan. The proposed zoning and the development of the site with the PD zoning is appropriate, and that the site will only permit two additional land uses that will be allowed within the PD district. All other land use is not specified within the PD zoning shall be subject to the formal process of amending a planned development concept plan, and this will require a public hearing before both planning commission and city council. Staff recommends approval of the rezoning, the PD concept plan, and the PD final plan, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for staff before we hear from the applicant?
Chair?
Yes.
Just to be clear, anything other than those two uses would have to come back before this board for a couple?
Thank you. Could you clarify also, like, what is different or changed or added or deleted to, for this time, for this?
For, so for this one, we came back with the, it's still the PDC. Instead of all general business uses, we've, we've now narrowed it down to the additional use of assembly and the indoor recreation as the commissions have asked for.
And assembly means like church-type thing?
Yes, assembly of anything less than five hundred.
Okay.
Yes.
And the other one, what was it called?
Indoor recreation.
What is usually falls under that?
Dance studios, art studios, gymnastics, karate.
Keyword being indoors?
Yes.
Inside?
That is correct.
I just wanted to clarify that. Thank you. Anything else for staff? All right, is applicant here?
Michael Scott, twenty-two thirty-five Southwest Rambling Vine Road, Lee Somerser. Sorry, I'm getting over a cold, so my voice, bear with me. We are back tonight under a plan development. We come before under general business, and that was, we received the feedback that Shell gave us, and so hopefully, under the plan development with restrictions, we can accomplish what we're all trying to accomplish tonight, so. Be happy to answer any questions.
I'm hoping we finally get there tonight. I have no questions for you, thank you. Anybody else? All right. Thank you. Anybody that would like to speak in favor of this project? Anybody here that would like to speak in opposition to this project? We'll begin start with you.
Good evening. My name's Gary Baker, and I live at eight seventeen Southwest Granite Lane. My property backs up to the proposed zoning change. I was here last, at the last meeting, and I expressed my disapproval of the, of approving the zoning. I didn't have much else to add because I came in, was not sure exactly what was going on over there. I've done my homework now, and I'm even stronger opposed to the change of the zoning there. I do have a question, I don't know if the city attorney can ask that, answer the question or not, but I would like to ask it. Can you operate a business in the city of Blue Springs with the zoning is not proper, and there's no business license to at that address?
Sir, this is a public hearing. Do we allow questions during public hearings? It's not a Q and A session?
Okay, well, I've made my point. Anyway, moving right along. My, I'm going to give you a little bit of my background, not to put feathers in my hat, but to emphasize the points that I'm going to make. I'm a retired builder, developer, I was a senior residential appraiser. I served on the Board of Equalization for Jackson County for six years, and I have a, I've had a real estate license. I'm very, I know a lot about real estate, and I feel like that I can, what I'm saying tonight might hit home. My first, I have no problem with the business that they want to run over there. It's for kids, and, and from the traffic I've seen over there, there's a lot of kids involved in it. I'm glad to see that they're, they are off their devices and on their feet and doing something. But let's not do it right smack dab in the middle of a real, of a residential property. All four sides of this property are either single-family residential or multifamily residential. Ninth Street that leads down into this property, in the last few weeks, has turned into Seven Highway. There's traffic going in and out the three or four days that they're operating. I'm concerned that there's going to be more days than that. I wish the business was somewhere else. I know they've spent some money over there getting this business ready, but they got the cart before the horse. No, no question about it. Let's talk about the value change for the property that surrounds the proposed site. Like I told you, I was a residential appraiser, and one of the things that, one of the terms that we use in residential appraising is called external obsolescence. I'm going to read to you what it means. This, this occurs when negative external factors, often economic in nature, affecting a wider area reduce a property's value, such as zoning change allowing nearby incompatible use. That's what's going to happen, and if I were appraising my own house, I might knock some money off of what it's worth, probably a good ten thousand dollars. There are fourteen or so houses that border that single family that are four or five hundred thousand dollar houses. Those people aren't happy. I've talked to some of them, not all of them, but I have several blessings from them to speak with you tonight.
All right, thank you, sir. Thank you very much.
I hope you vote again.
Anybody else? Welcome, name and address, please.
Yeah. My name is Sherri Frost. I live at eight twenty-one Southwest Granite Lane. I live right next to them. You can see, if you look right below where the church is, that where it curves, I'm on the right side. My backyard backs directly up to there. I'm actually the closest house on our side. I am opposed to this. I understand that they've changed this from a general business to a recreation area that I just heard. I don't know what's the difference between the business and a recreation center, because Rampage, they're still, you know, they're still making money. It is a business, so I guess I'm kind of confused as to how, you know, suddenly it's no longer a business, it's going to be a recreation center. I just, I grew up in Blue Springs, you know, I went to elementary school, junior high, high school, I live here now. This is my forever home, and it may look like it's a little bit of distance away, but their property is not very far, like my back patio is like right there. You know, they talked about that this is giving back to the community and their needs, but it's not giving back to my community, who's mostly single women, a lot of retired people. So I don't know how having all these kids here is really gonna, like, give back to our community. The last thing I want to say is that they started this, like, running this business, it's my understanding, in June. It's been five months, they've been running the business the whole entire time. When they found out it wasn't zoned for business, they continued to run it. I don't know if they had permits for all the renovations. They did. But I can tell you, they put up a chain link fence, like, right kind of near my house, and I, probably like six feet, and it's my understanding that Blue Springs doesn't even allow that. So I feel like on good faith, what they're doing is not okay. Everything they've done towards this, they've done it the wrong way.
Thank you. Anybody else that's here that would like to speak in opposition to? Name and address, please.
Karen Baker, eight seventeen Southwest Granite Lane. I think that, of course, I agree with everything that has been said. My main concern is the traffic that comes into that building. It's off of Ninth Street, which is a dead-end street, so it's constant back and forth, turning around. Ninth Street is a dead-end street right off where that building is. Our backyard backs up against that dead end. So it's just constant traffic, turning around, going in the driveway. It's, and that is all multifamily living around there with children, pets. It's just too much traffic for that area. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else?
My name is, my name is Debbie Dudley. I live at twenty-two oh three Southwest Ninth Street. My house is the one just to the south of Sherri's. I'm the HOA president at this point in time. This is a neighborhood of twenty-four homes, and I feel like I have to represent all of those who aren't here. While I, while I am opposed to seeing this be rezoned, my biggest concern, and I don't expect an answer, my biggest concern is how we got here in the first place. Because this was a residential area, and where this church was initially put in, and I assume the city approved the church to be built there to begin with, it was already a multifamily residential area. So I feel like we've been put in this position because of a decision that was made that maybe shouldn't have been made years ago. I do appreciate that there's been some flexibility and some changes in what may happen if they, you know, if they do get approved to do what they're doing today, that we get an opportunity to come back and speak with you again, should they sell the property. I, I mean, I don't really have a resolution. I have to, I feel like we've made some progress, but I still feel like we have a good reason to oppose, and that's really it.
Thank you very much. Any other comments?
Good evening. My name is Kelly Smith, twenty-two nineteen Southwest Ninth Street. I'm at the corner of Richwood and Southwest Ninth. Part of the HOA, we've already seen increase in traffic coming through, both foot and motor traffic. One thing I would like to say is thankful for the changes that were made. I was here at the last meeting, although he's been running a business that he doesn't have a license for. So who's to say once Rampage leaves? He's not going to revert to something else that's not been approved, because he's already doing that. And with where Sherri lives, where Karen and Gary live, I know I've heard them say they're afraid people are going to come flying through their back fence because of the traffic. So just things to think about, concerns for our neighborhood. We are seniors, the majority of us. We're also a lot of, you know, single women. I have a disabled husband. Having people coming through our property that shouldn't be there because of the increased traffic, it's not okay. And yeah, it affects property values. So something to think about. We appreciate you listening and hearing what we have to say.
Thank you very much. Anybody else that would like to speak in opposition to or favor of? All right. I will close the public comment section of this public hearing. I've got a few questions, but staff usually answers those preemptively, so. Any comments?
So I would like to clarify that the property owner, Mr. Scott, is not the business owner of Rampage Athletics. He is the property owner leasing his space for a portion of the day to Rampage Athletics. Rampage Athletics does not currently have a business license. They were notified of the need to get one after they had moved into the space already. It is a kind of customary thing for staff to do, that if we notice by them that they are not meeting the city code, and they take corrective action steps, such as proposing to rezone the property to allow for their use, that we do not do any code enforcement on that until a matter such as this is resolved. So that is a pretty standard practice for such things as zoning violations for land uses. If we discover that a land use is happening on a property, and that land use is not allowed in that zoning district, we follow the same thing. We allow them to continue pending the resolution as to whether or not a zoning change would get approved or not. And then if it's, if it is changed, then they're allowed to operate. If it's not changed, then they're not. The history of this site, as indicated on one of, I believe, page, the first page of the staff report, the property was originally zoned general business back in nineteen ninety-three, and was, and the church was there. And then it was proposed to be re, or it was rezoned in nineteen ninety-three to R three multifamily. And then in the year two thousand, after a couple of different attempts, a PUD for the Eagles Ridge, or Eagles Landing PUD, which are the townhomes or row houses immediately to the west and north that are off of that kind of cul-de-sac drive, for those to be approved. So the, the church land use had been predated, those homes before they were ever built. The property to the south also was developed after that church was located there as well. So that's kind of the history I just wanted to point out in the staff report for that. So, uh, that's kind of the history I just wanted to point out in the staff report for that. Uh, any other questions? We're happy to answer. Um, it does look like a, a fence was installed, uh, six-foot chain link, which is permitted under city code. Uh, according to Google Street View, uh, as far back that I can tell, September of twenty-four. Um, I believe this Rampage moved in in March of this year, uh, so that may have been something that, um, Mr. Scott or, or the, the church that he's with, uh, did sometime prior to that. But, uh, there's nothing in the code that says they can't do a six-foot chain link fence.
Thank you.
And we're happy to answer any other question.
If they sold this property and it closed in two weeks, what would happen to this, uh, PDC concept plan that we're getting ready to approve?
It would continue on the property.
Okay.
Uh, the only way that this would come back is if somebody proposed or submitted a, proposed a land use that wasn't an assembly or recreation indoor, um, or we received a business license or a building permit for another land use. Um, and staff would not approve either of those, um, because they wouldn't be in compliance with the zoning if somebody applied for a business license for, you know, uh, a restaurant or, um, some other type of land use. But there is no provision in the code that, that tracks changes in ownership patterns, um, because that would be very difficult for staff to.
Track.
To track.
Right. Thank you. Any other discussion from staff or questions of staff before we give the applicant the final chance? Seeing none? Is there anything the applicant would like to further clarify based on what you've heard? Anything else? Okay. Alright, I will close the public hearing. And I would ask for a motion on the rezoning portion.
Chair.
Yes.
I move to approve, uh, rezoning RZ zero seven two five nine six four four for Rampage Athletics.
Of a motion, how about a second?
Second.
Other second. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Howe?
Aye.
Commissioner Ingersoll?
Aye.
Commissioner Humphrey?
Aye.
Commissioner Stokenberry?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Sanderson?
Aye.
Commissioner Graham?
Aye.
Chairperson Hennig?
Aye.
All ayes.
Uh, I'd ask for motion on the plan development, concept plan portion of this project.
Chair.
Yes.
Uh, move to approve plan development, concept plan PDC zero seven two five nine six four five for Rampage Athletics.
And a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Ingersoll?
Aye.
Commissioner Humphrey?
Aye.
Commissioner Stokenberry?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Sanderson?
Aye.
Commissioner Graham?
Aye.
Commissioner Howe?
Aye.
Chairperson Hennig?
Aye.
All ayes.
Both of those items will be heard by the city council at their next meeting on November third, twenty twenty-five, at six P M. And a final, I will ask for motion on the plan development, final plan.
Chair.
Of this project. Yes.
Sorry, chair. Plan, uh, I've moved to approve the plan development, final plan PDF zero nine two five nine six eight two for Rampage Athletics.
Second.
A motion, a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, moving on. The gallery's thinning out as the evening goes on. The next item on the agenda is the final plat PF zero nine two five nine six nine three for Briarwood Oak Estates. Second plat. I think Mr. Day is ready to tell us about it.
Yes, sir.
Whenever you're ready.
Uh, good evening, commissioners. Um, before you this evening is a request for approval for the final plat of Briarwood Oaks Estates, fourth plat. A proposed single-family development located north of southwest, wo- southwest westbound US forty highway and east of southwest fortieth street. The proc- the property is approximately three point two three plus or minus acres and is zoned SF seven, single family. The final plat consists of eleven single-family neighborhood lots and one tract of land for landscape easement. The proposed building type follows the detached house neighborhood lot classification and complies with the development standards approved with the preliminary plat. All lots meet the approved minimum lot size, lot width, applicable setbacks, coverage, and height requirements. All required public improvements, including the interior street network, have been completed. Sidewalks are provided on one side of all streets consistent with the approved plans. Um, and staff has reviewed the final plat for compliance with the approved preliminary plat zoning and UDC requirements. All technical comments have been addressed, and the plat meets the minimum standards for lot dimensions and access. Uh, staff recommends approval of the final plat with three conditions.
Alright, any questions up here? There's applicant here. You got anything to say? Alright, that's, that's fine. Uh, any, anything else up here? Any questions or comments? Alright, I would ask for a motion.
Chair.
Yes.
I move to approve PF zero nine two five nine six nine three for Briarwood Oaks Estates with its three conditions.
I have a motion, how about a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The item will be recommended and heard by the city council at their next meeting on November third, twenty twenty-five, at six P M. Move right along. The next item on the agenda is the final plat PF zero nine two five nine seven zero two for Hudson Estates of Blue Springs. I believe Mr. Hutchinson is ready to tell us about it.
Good evening, commissioners. Nick Hutchinson, Assistant Director of City Development. Uh, before you tonight is a request for approval for the final plat for Hudson Estates of Blue Springs, which is a sixty-unit, single-story apartment community located east of Seven Highway and south of Cordova Mason Elementary School. The site is approximately fifteen point two seven acres and is proposed as a single-phase development. The final plat creates two lots for the apartment development and dedicates Southwest Hudson Drive as a public street. Hudson Drive will extend through the site and terminate with a temporary cul-de-sac with a long-range plan connecting to the roadway and Eagle Creek subdivision to the east. Stormwater detention, sanitary sewer, water service have all been reviewed. A stormwater management plan has been approved and utilities can adequately serve this site. Four access points are proposed to serve the development with sidewalks required on both sides of Hudson Drive. The applicant is, uh, preserving the existing tree line along the southern property boundary, meeting the landscape buffer requirement through preservation rather than new plantings. And the new, uh, proposal includes a six point six one acre of open space meeting and exceeding the forty percent minimum with the required ten percent active open space provided. Staff finds that the plat is in substantial compliance with the preliminary plat and surrounding development pattern. It meets all UDC technical requirements. It includes appropriate public improvements and phasing and performance guarantees, and is consistent with the comprehensive plan and has met standards for the final plat review. With that, staff recommends approval, approval of the final plat with conditions as written in the staff report.
Thank you. Any questions? Is this the final approval for this project, or is there anything yet coming? This is the final plat, this, this should be it?
Correct.
Okay. I don't have any questions. Applicant would like to speak?
Good evening. Uh, Kyle Miller, Crockett Engineering, one thousand West Nifon, uh, Columbia, Missouri. Just here to answer any questions you guys have, uh, tonight. Be happy to answer anything. Other than that, uh, I think staff pretty much covered it.
Anything? Alright.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else up here about this? Alright, I would ask for a motion.
Chair.
Yes.
I'd move to approve final plat PF zero nine two five nine seven zero two for Hudson Estates of Blue Springs with the five staff conditions.
I have a motion, how about a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, that will be recommended and heard by the city council on their next meeting, Monday, November third, twenty twenty-five, at six P M. That's all I've got on my list. Any other business? From anybody? Alright. Okay, seeing none, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Better not be any. Alright, this meeting is now closed. Thank you all very much.